Good evening and welcome to the City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Agenda. I'm sorry, meetings of the City Council of November 13th, 2018. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Bierman?
Here.
Councilmember Carter?
Here.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Here.
Councilmember Hickman?
Here.
Councilmember Wilson?
Here.
Councilmember Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Holman?
Here.
Councilmember Scott?
Here.
Mayor Miller?
Here. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three is approval of the City Council Conference Minutes of September 11th, 2018, City Council Conference Minutes of October 9th, and City Council Norman Utilities Authority, Norman Municipal Authority, and Norman Tax Increment Finance Authority Minutes of October 23rd. I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second? There's a motion on the floor to approve the minutes by the show of hands. All those in favor, opposed, same sign, that was unanimous. Is a proclamation proclaiming Saturday, November 24th, 2018, a Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proclamation.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign, that was unanimous. Is the consent docket, oh, I'm sorry. This was important. This is Small Business Saturday proclamation. Whereas the city of Norman, Oklahoma celebrates local small business and the contribution they make to our local economy and community, whereas according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses representing more than 99.7% of all businesses with employees, creating 65.9% of net new jobs created over from 2000 to 2017, and whereas small business employ 47.5% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90% of consumers in the United States say that Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, and whereas 89% of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas 73% of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently-owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small, independently-owned businesses was to support their community, and whereas the city of Norman supports local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods, and whereas advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore I, Lynn Miller, Mayor of the city of Norman, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Norman and encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I think Shelley Cox is here from Caymans, and also the president of the chamber.
A wonderful example of a small business owner that has done so much for our community. Do you want to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We certainly appreciate you. As a 38-year small brick-and-mortar retail business and on behalf of all small businesses in this community and owners, we do appreciate the city recognizing us. Want to really thank Sarah Kaplan also for all the work that she does on our behalf, and we certainly appreciate having her aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley. So remember, everybody, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, go to a small business near you to do your shopping. Item number five is the consent docket. This item is placed on the agenda so that the City Council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine agenda items that they wish to be approved or acknowledged by one motion. I need a motion to place items six through 33, with the exception of items nine and 29, on the consent docket. Do I have a second? Or do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. That was unanimous. Item number six, ordinance rezoning property located at 103 West Apache Street from Center City Form Base Code to Center City Planned Unit Development. Item number seven is an ordinance upon first reading amending the code to change the section title to Communication Facilities, adding definitions and updating related terminology, clarifying language applicable to the commercial communication towers and television and radio transmission towers, and adding regulations related to small cell wireless facilities. Item eight is the submission of the city manager's change order report and directing the filing thereof. Item nine was removed from the consent docket. The next 10 items are the acceptance of easements to be used in conjunction with the 24th Avenue East Bond Project from Lindsay Street to Robinson Street. Item 10, 11, 12, and 13 all were easements with Carla Knepfley. The first two were donated. The second two, one was $71.50, one was $19,533.75. Items 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, and 19 are easements from M.A.R.H. Properties LLC, one in the amount of $26,580, one in the amount of $13,240, one in the amount of $1,960, one in the amount of $23,160, one in the amount of $11,650, and the final one in the amount of $1,720. Item 20 is grant of an easement to Oklahoma Gas and Electric for the purpose of installing underground electrical service for the Westwood Tennis Center Indoor Court Facility project. Item 21 is consideration of a grant of an easement to Oklahoma Gas and Electric for the purpose of installing underground electrical services for the Westwood Tennis Center Indoor Court Facility. Item 22 is the purchase of one generator from Faith Electric in the amount of $26,150 to be used at fire station number one. Item 23 is amendment number four to a contract with Garber LLC, increasing the contract amount by $89,300 for a revised contract amount of $5,193,000 to provide additional construction administration, construction, observation, and warranty assistance services for the WRF Phase II improvements and the WRF Phase II maintenance additions. Item 24 is amendment number one to a contract with the Oklahoma Historical Society State Historic Preservation Office, changing the scope of work for the Certified Local Government Grant. Item 25 is the final acceptance and final payment of contract, a contract with Sun Construction Services for the Sooner Theater Dressing Room Renovation Project. Item 26 is the final acceptance and payment of a contract with Precision Concrete Cutting of Oklahoma for the Sidewalk Horizontal Saw Cutting Project. Item 27 is a contract with Chickasaw Telecommunication Services to provide for payment of a 3% fee in lieu of franchise fee for any revenue generated as a result of the use of the fiber-optic conduit constructed along the north side of East Etowah Road from Roman Way East to 8,001 East Etowah Road for a period of five years. Item 28 is a contract with Garber in the amount of $106,900 to provide preliminary design services for co-composting improvements. Item 29 was removed from the consent docket. Item 30 is a contract with Oklahoma Fiber granting access to the city's right-of-way for the purpose of installing fiber for Internet services and providing for video service provider fee in the event video services provided, all for a period of five years. Item 31 is resolution reaffirming commitment to the community and employee health and wellness, calling for a review of the city's and community's health and wellness policies and programs in furtherance of continued improvement for the city and all of its residents, and encouraging the city manager to collaborate with the city's employees and collective bargaining representatives, as well as the Oklahoma Department of Health, Norman Regional Hospital, and the Oklahoma Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust to identify healthy business and healthy community strategies and a community project to further these goals, and then submit to City Council a resolution authorizing the submission of an application for a grant from the TSET Healthy Communities Incentive Program. Item 32 is a resolution expressing support for the transfer of the title of Norman Project Lake Thunderbird to the Central Oklahoma Master Conservancy District, COMCD, requesting COMCD undertake a long-term operational analysis and cost of service study to assist the board and the member cities in determining long-term impacts, and urging COMCD to preserve the recreational aspects of the lake should title transfer be achieved. Item 33 is a resolution appropriating $20,000 from the capital fund balance to be used for a traffic calming project on Hamden Avenue. I need a motion to approve or reject the consent docket.
Motion to approve.
At this time, I would like to recognize Christina Bell, Assistant City Attorney, to make a presentation on item 31.
Councilmembers, Christina Bell, Assistant City Attorney. This resolution is a statement of community effort to pursue up to $1,000 in grant funding from the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, or TSET, in order to promote healthy living. The city of Norman has received two previous awards through the Oklahoma Department of Health Certified Healthy Program. In 2012, the city received a $15,000 award that was used to purchase playground equipment and a water fountain at East Ridge Park, and then in 2013, the city received a $35,000 award that was used for constructing a fitness walking trail at Saxon Park. The current funding levels under the TSET program are bronze, silver, and gold, and because the city has received two prior awards, the city would be required to satisfy the requirements of all three levels in order to be eligible for the $100,000 award. The Settlement Endowment Trust grant has four criteria in four different areas, the first being tobacco. It does require an ordinance prohibiting the use of tobacco products on all city property. The second area is nutrition, which has various requirements discussing the promotion of healthy food options available at the city as an employer. The third is physical activities promoting a more physically active lifestyle, and then the fourth criteria involves community actions criteria that include an assortment of things, including a community task force promoting health and wellness on city property, and a review of planning and zoning to regulate tobacco-free retail establishments. The tobacco-free policies would require the city to look at reviewing our current smoking ordinances, which are currently in Section 10 of the city ordinance, Sections 501 through 513, and could require an amendment of those ordinances, and then it would also require the city to look at a review of our existing tobacco cessation support services, which some of those are available currently under the city's insurance plan through our prescription provider. There are various nutrition requirements that are applicable to food and beverages sold or offered in the workplace. That's referred to as a snack pantry in the criteria. Some options would be looking at fresh food vending and/or healthier choice options, also the encouragement and promotion of healthier food options through seminars, workshops, meetings, and newsletters, and also one of the recommendations is a private, non-bathroom area used for the expression of breast milk. There are physical activity recommendations. It is important to note that some of these requirements could impact working schedules and/or working conditions that would therefore require consultation and/or negotiation with the collective bargaining representatives. There's three different areas here promoting physical activity through seminars, workshops, classes, newsletters, and meetings, consideration of access for an onsite fitness facility, and also the exploration of flexible work arrangements to accommodate physical activity breaks. In addition to the community action criteria that was mentioned previously, another requirement for the grant would be to identify certified healthy community partners. Part of the TSET incentive grant looks at the city of Norman as a community, not just the city as an employer, and so it would require that the city identify eight certified healthy businesses as being certified through the Department of Health Certified Healthy Oklahoma Program. We would have to be able to identify eight, and we currently do have 25, so we already meet that requirement. A minimum of eight certified healthy congregations, according to the 2017 awards, there are currently zero, although we have met with our partners and representatives from TSET, as well as Norman Regional Hospital and the Department of Health, and they are working with various congregations and other entities within the community to help them try to get certified through that program as well. And then the final one would be, we would need eight certified healthy early childhood programs, and there are currently five within the Norman city limits. Any kind of grant award would need to be used to enhance wellness activities. Some examples of awards that have been given out in the past that would be eligible would be walking trails, parks, and trails lighting, farmers market venues, community gardens, outdoor physical activity equipment, splash pads, community pools, walkability plans, and basketball and tennis courts, or bicycle lanes and bike racks. And any kind of an award has one year in order to spend that funds, and as I've noted earlier, the city has used prior awards to enhance some of our parks. Grant compliance procedures would focus on collaboration with our community partners, which would include other agencies and businesses within the community, as well as TSET, the Department of Health, and Norman Regional Hospital representatives, identification of a permissible project for a grant award. We would look at policy development and program implementation for our city policies as an employer. We would also look at cost evaluation and consideration for some of the requirements and balance those interests. As mentioned before, it would require consultation and/or negotiation with our collective bargaining representatives, and then we would also look at tobacco use ordinance amendments. So this resolution reaffirms the city's commitment to the community and employee health and wellness. It calls for a review of the city's and the community's health and wellness policies and programs in furtherance of evaluating a future application for the TSET Healthy Incentive Grant. This resolution establishes a goal of collaborating with both our internal and external partners to identify the healthy business and healthy community strategies in a community project, and also encourages continued application for the annual Certified Healthy Oklahoma certification. The city of Norman currently is recognized as both a certified healthy business, looking at the city as an employer, as well as a certified healthy community, looking at the city as a whole. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Clark?
Christina, thank you for that presentation. I'm really excited about this opportunity. We've actually looked at it in the Oversight Committee. I understand that there are going to be some ordinance changes and collective bargaining that we need to do, but once we overcome those hurdles, what I would really like to see is a community committee put together with all walks of life and ability and ages and backgrounds to come up with a creative idea of how our community can use that $100,000 to make Norman a healthy community. So I'm very optimistic about us overcoming those hurdles again and taking this next step to bring this grant to our community. So thank you for your work on this.
Councilmember Castleberry?
Just two quick questions. So we're not going to have smoking on any city properties anymore, so I assume that includes Westwood Golf Course.
Yes, in order to be eligible for that funding, it would require minutes of our ordinance, which would require removing the exception that is currently on our ordinance, which would include removing Westwood Golf Course smoking as an option.
Okay, so I don't think we're going to stop golfers from smoking cigars on Westwood Golf Course. What's the fine? I mean, what's, if they are?
Right now, a first-time offense for a smoking ordinance violation is $100, and I believe that's prohibited by city statute.
Okay.
Or by state statute.
You mentioned one of the criteria was the congregations?
Yes.
So just walk me through the separation of church and state here.
Right, so the TSET incentive grant, the way that that works, it's money coming from the Tobacco Settlement Endowment Trust, and they're looking at the health and wellness of the community, the entire city as a whole. And so part of the criteria that they have established is that you have so many certified healthy businesses and childhood development centers, as well as congregations. Congregations is just one of the criteria that they have established as far as a separation of church and state. The congregations themselves would have to apply for certified healthy status through the Department of Health. That is not something the city would be involved in, and so if there are eight of those congregations that choose to do that on their own, then that would be a requirement, or that would be something that would allow the city to be eligible, but the city itself would not be involved in forcing them to do that or even involved in that process. That's just one of the criteria to look at it.
How does a congregation qualify? Is it 100% participation, is it 75%, or I'm just curious?
They have, the standards for the certified healthy businesses and congregations are somewhat similar to what it is for the city in terms of basically being a smoke-free campus, and there may be some other requirements, but basically it's a smoke-free campus on their facility.
So we would provide them the information requirements if they chose to do it, what they would need to do?
Right, Norman Regional Hospital and the Department of Health actually has representatives that work with communities and employers, and so they would actually be the ones that would coordinate that. The city wouldn't be directly involved with that. What happens is they would provide us the list of who all is eligible.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bierman?
So I have some kind of split feelings about some of this, but the one part that I am really excited about is the inclusion of appropriate places to express breast milk as a part of the nutrition requirements. That's something that I, of course, would like to see the city pursue, whether it's in response to applying for this grant or otherwise. I've been talking with a lot of people and actually heard some pretty difficult stories of other businesses in this community and also other organizations like Norman Public Schools where, you know, new moms who are teachers having difficulty finding services like this, and I think that the city could lead that effort by pursuing this and making sure that we have non-bathroom facilities for new mothers to do that. So I appreciate that being included, and I'll be interested to see how this moves forward.
Any other questions? For Christina, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
I think this is an exciting possibility, and I'm glad that you all are going to be working with the staff on this. Any other comments from the council regarding any other item on the consent docket? Motion on the floor is to approve the consent docket. Councilmember, she may cast your vote.
Our votes have been to approve the consent docket passes unanimously.
This brings us to the off-consent items. Item number nine, submission at the Citizens Financial Oversight Board Annual Report. I'll entertain a motion to acknowledge receipt of the report.
Motion to accept?
There, second.
Second.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Bill Nations, who is the Chair of the CFOB, and he will be making a presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. I appreciate being here. It's been, well, not too long, I don't think since I was here last, but you have a couple of new councilmembers here, and I want to welcome the new councilmembers. Hope you enjoy your tenure as I did when I was serving here. So I am the Chair of the CFOB. We're a board of nine members. We have a couple of new members that I might mention to you. Of course, the biggest blow to our membership came early on when Councilmember Clark abandoned us for higher calling. We're welcome to come back and visit anytime you'd like. We lost a couple of councilmembers due to stresses and requirements of their careers, and one of them's been replaced by Linda Price, who had a very long and distinguished career in the city of Norman. She's now retired, and she is proving to be a great councilmember. And our newest member attended her first meeting in our last meeting about two or three weeks ago. Her name, her name is Sadie Oriola, so she's a welcome member. She's going to be a great addition. Our last meeting was on 10/15/18. Our next meeting will be 12/10. We meet every two months. We're about, we're in a third year now, and I need to thank staff for being so great. We have a terrific staff who supports us endlessly, and anything that their silly chair asks, they try to deliver. I also wanted to make a comment about the great job being done by ad hoc committees, which are part of this organization that oversees Norman forward, and those ad hoc committees, which are ad hoc committees, I think there are five right now, interact directly with the major projects that are going on, and they have just been great when issues have come up on a major project, whether it was a tennis facility at Westwood, or whether there's been issues with libraries, whatever it's been, they have really done yeoman's work at working out solutions and compromises when we've had a problem. So I want to thank all of those ad hoc committees. There is one member of our board that is assigned to attend all those ad hoc committee meetings to keep up with them. We are required to present to you an annual report every year, which you apparently, do you have that already? Okay, you have that. I guess the most recent concerns of the board have been, the latest one was the indoor tennis facility, which due to some soil issues, adding an air conditioning system, and increased cost of steel, had some funding issues, and you have taken action on that, and the board have reviewed that, and we agree that the actions that you were taking were appropriate. We have ongoing concerns in that revenues from the sales taxes are still not doing what we, the projections were called for. It seems to be improving. We're not so alarmed yet as to wave any red flags for you to be worried about. I know you watch that very carefully also. And then the other one that I know is on your mind very heavily, and that is negotiations for property for various, whether it be Griffin, or the senior center, or aquatic center. I know that you're working diligently to try to resolve those problems with locations for those facilities. You'll find in the conclusion to that annual report that I, I think that the board views the three, over the years that we've been watching this, that progress is ongoing and staff is doing a good job. We're pleased with what's happening, and I guess what I ask myself personally each time that I try to review this, I try to compare it and think about whether we are being as diligent and as successful as MAPS projects were, especially the first one. And from my personal view, I would say that we are, and that's good, because MAPS projects obviously are successful. obviously are successful. And that's, we're in a MAPS III now. And so, I believe that we're currently performing to the same standards as the MAPS projects were. So, with that, if there are questions, I'll try to answer them. Or if not, we've got a great staff who can help me.
Any questions? Councilmember Hickman.
Hey, Bill. Thank you very much for your presentation and for your service on the board and being the Chair, and for all the other committee members. Because I don't know if my question is really for you or for staff. I've had this kind of, I'll package this into sort of one question or express one concern. You know, my old days, I was a federal government contracting officer. So, you know, from that perspective, you're always looking at the schedule and the budget. And so, I wanted to first ask you about the schedule. And because there are growing concerns, especially with regard to the indoor aquatic center, the indoor sports facility, and the football and softball complexes, that if you look at the original implementation schedule, it showed those projects acquiring the lands in 2016 and 17. And obviously, that's not happened. And your report doesn't specifically address that. And I have people that are expressing frustration from kind of a lack of transparency perspective, that we're not acknowledging we're having these challenges. And so, I'm just kind of wondering, where are we at to the extent that you know or can talk about as far as trying to resolve some of those problems? And has the committee had any discussions about sort of what I'll call a Plan B, if we aren't able to secure those lands from what we originally thought locations?
I think for the specifics of your question, it's best that I defer either to Jeff or Judd, or both of them, to tell you where those projects are now. Our committee or board hasn't met in three weeks, and they may have more current information than I do. I think our advice would, if we wanted to, if the board wanted to make a statement about this, it would more or less say that we are increasingly concerned, and would encourage the council to look for alternatives to this, would be the response of the board.
And I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I know that there are, I think, some folks here from the, that support the indoor aquatic center. And I know that I've met with several of them, and in fact, have met with Norman Public Schools, to discuss some potential options that maybe they might have. And I think they're looking into that. And so, I do think that we need to work together to try to solve some of those problems, to try to find land, and maybe even funding. And I don't know, you know, if that's something that, how we task that, or ask your committee to get more involved in that.
I would tell you that I think it's the consensus of the board, that our charge is to oversee actions that you have taken. If you want us to do what you're asking, then you should just ask us to do that.
Okay.
We don't view that as the charge. If you read what the charge is, and then it also says, anything else that the council asks us to do.
Yes, sir. And that's why I figured that y'all probably weren't doing, because I know you usually look retrospectively at things that we have done.
So, my answer would be that if you would like for us to assist in some way, and try to find alternatives, and look for funding, that sort of thing, simply it just needs to be a request from you to us.
Okay. And I guess, prior, maybe ask staff to come up. I noticed in your report in regard to the Senior Center, it was referenced as being suspended. I think that's on page five.
Yes.
Tell me what you guys, what you mean by that, because I'm sure I'll get questions about that as well.
Well, no one has officially suspended it. It's probably not the best choice of words. It's simply, there's not a lot of activity. For example, the ad hoc committee has not met in a considerable period of time. Tom Sherman is our liaison to that. There's not been any action or activity. It's sort of been quiet. Nothing's been suspended. You're correct. That's probably a poor word.
Okay. I don't know, Terry, if you can maybe come up and talk to the scheduling concerns on those Norman Ford, those three projects. I don't know if you heard my question or not.
Terry Floyd, Development Coordinator. And I'll also probably ask if, you know, Judd or Jeff have some interjections here as well. But yeah, obviously, though, it's a concern of the acquisition of land. And as you know, and we've, I think have worked diligently to try to keep council apprised of discussions with the state. I know there's been some executive sessions, I believe, on that acquisition with you all in legal. Additionally, of course, the North Base discussions consider. But we, you know, as a staff, we're working towards some things. I believe on November 20th, the study session will have some discussion about the Senior Center, have some site locations, and some analysis of some potential options for council to look at on those. And we've kind of laid some of those out previously over the last couple of years, if you remember, some of the reports that have been generated, and some of the things that we've discussed. But we've been, obviously, as a staff, have been looking at that very closely, and looking at what those alternatives might be, and can at least for November the 20th, speak to some of that at the study session.
Okay. So, just to be clear, I guess, for folks that are, maybe haven't been following along, for lack of a better expression, the indoor aquatic center and indoor sports facility were projected to be in the North Base area on property owned by the university. Is that right?
Correct, initially.
Do you know whether or not in those initial budgets in 2015, there was funds included for the purchasing or acquiring of land that the city would actually own itself, or to buy that land from OU?
For the indoor aquatic facility? No, it was really anticipated that to be the construction at the time for those facilities. And, you know, we anticipated that to be on that. So, no, the purchase may be something that we have to think about, how that impacts the overall budget of those projects.
I mean, that's what I wanted to clarify. So, if we do ultimately, as Mr. Nations and I were discussing, have to acquire property, purchase property that the city would own, let's say, that would be a cost that's not in the current budgets?
It was not anticipated, no.
Okay. How about for the softball and football complex that was going to be with the Department of Mental Health? Was there a budget included in that item?
I believe there was some money budgeted for land acquisition within. I'm looking to Judd. That's also his project. But yes, there was money anticipated to purchase some land for that.
Okay. And on the Senior Center, was there a budget included for that in the 2015 Norman Ford bond?
A budget?
Yes, sir.
No, there was not a budget per se. But of course, as you know, and you know, you read through the bond language on that, or the language that was on the proposition, that was an eligible project for Norman Ford funding. But there wasn't an exact budget identified at the time. And of course, we've worked through some different budget scenarios, different thoughts on different options, such as Andrew Parkoche. And it put some budgets together for that over the last couple of years. But a specified budget, no.
Do you know why there wasn't a budget included for, is that the only project that there's not a budget for in Norman Ford?
To my knowledge, that was the only specific project that did not have an identified budget. Of course, if you remember, at the time, the council was really working through a couple of options. At that time, they were still looking at whether it was in the current library, the current central library, whether that was a standalone site. So, that budget wasn't, the project wasn't specified as to its exact location, or its exact nature at the time when it was passed in 2015. So, there wasn't a budget put together for it that was identified within the bond language. But again, we've worked through some different budget scenarios based on some planning and some work that was done. And this kind of got us to some target numbers now.
Okay. And then, on the land acquisition issue that we were discussing, do we have, does the, in 2015, when the bond was presented to the public and passed, do we have anything in the file we can pull out that we had with OU or the Department of Mental Health regarding those land acquisition discussions to kind of hold their feet to the fire? Like, were they made any kind of a commitment or anything?
I don't know of any exact documentation on that. I mean, I may ask Jeff if there was anything there. But I know there was discussions that were happening ahead of time, because obviously, when we, you go back through some of the presentations, when we took time from, really from about, you know, March to May, when we were having those council, when we were refining the Norman Forward package, there was discussion even then. And in some of the presentations, talk about the discussion that was going on with the Department of Mental Health at that time, and some discussion about the actual site prior to even the Norman Forward vote in 2015.
And I understand, Terry, and I hate to put you on the spot. And so, and I don't mean to, but you have to understand that I have people contacting me, like, that are supporters of the swim community, for example, that voted for Norman Ford, that are asking me, you know, why wasn't that land secured? Why are we having this problem now? And I think it's fair that we, like, my comment to Mr. Nations, that we be transparent with the public about where we're at and what our plan is. And so, I guess, I'll ask my question again, is if an indoor swim aquatic center person, Pisces Project person asks me, do we have anything in writing that we can hold the university's feet to the fire on to make a deal with us on that land at the time that Norman Ford was presented on and voted on by the public? Are you aware of anything?
I'm not aware of anything in writing. But again, and I also just want to point out, you know, it's not for, not for lack of effort on the staff's part.
No, I understand.
We've been really trying to work these things out for like, ahead of the vote, even, you know, for the last three years. And so, there's been, there's been a lot of effort there. And of course, you know, you're aware of a lot of that. But nothing in writing to my mouth that I have.
Okay. Thank you, Terry. I appreciate it.
Sure.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Nations, for your presentation. I just want to know, kind of along those same lines, what Councilmember Hickman is talking about. But do we have an expiration date for exploring, maybe Terry, I don't know if this is a question for you, but these land options, when do we give this up? And I know we spend some time talking about these in study session and what have you. But when do we go looking for other land?
Well, it's obviously always at the council's discretion. I mean, you know, when we want to pursue other options and move off of that. But I would say, you know, particularly when we think about Reeves and Griffin, we want to remember the phasing for those projects. So, as we, as we progress on those projects, that acquisition and those abilities to move certain, particularly in Reeves, move the softball field, so we can start that project. And the parks maintenance facility, that's very important. And so, at some point, that will become a time concern. Obviously, we're not at that point now. We're still in the, still in construction document phases and thinking about that. But those are important. You know, for the indoor aquatics facility and so forth, you know, we've had some progress. And council may be aware, you know, recently, we went through a request for qualifications, where we were picking out firms. We got to that finalist. And we still have those finalists and those teams together. So, if, you know, the option is made for determination of land, we would call those firms, bring them in, and really begin interviewing to select a firm to do a master planning for whatever that complex would look like and where it is, you know, really the next day.
Can I just ask another question right there? The swim and the aquatic center and that area that the land would be acquired from OU specifically, I mean, I would like, I guess I'll not ask any question. A statement from me is that I would prefer that we have given it an expiration date, that they get it on there. I mean, we need to kind of put them, you know, it's their turn to say, we're just not interested in you, you know. They're not that into us. So, we need to move on to something else.
It's a good move.
That's just a statement. I'm sorry to put you up there for that.
What I've observed over the last two and a half years, that we have struggled with all of these issues, is I've observed council members and staff continuing to look at every option that anyone has brought us as a possibility. The fact that we really did not know what position we were going to be in with the university, I think until this summer, when we had a change of administration, I think the hope was that that was going to work out. And there were continuous conversations. The same thing has happened with the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health. And I certainly wouldn't, I mean, I don't think anyone wants to continue when we have clear evidence that this is not going to work out. And I think we're pretty close to that right now. But the fact that we've continued to have these negotiations with these other governmental organizations, which all have their own issues as well, has not meant that we have not continued to look at other possibilities at our other parks, or other pieces of land, or building sites that people have recommended to us. And I think that Terry particularly has done a considerable amount of work scoping out different places to see if they're possible. So, I think, I think we're open pretty much to different options and ideas that people have. I am still hopeful about the Oklahoma Department of Mental Health. And we should know something about that in another week. So, that's kind of what I have to say. I don't think anybody's been totally married to any site. I think there have been good things about every one of them. In terms of the seniors, there's a number of sites that the seniors have said, we're site neutral. Just find us a site and get us the money. So, you know, I've been told that over and over and over again. So, we're working on it. And I heard Councilmember Castleberry said, say today, he hoped we'd have some kind of solution by April. And I do as well. But if anybody out there has some great ideas and some money, we'd love to hear from you. Because we care a lot about these projects and want to get them done. Councilmember Bierman.
So, I'm not entirely sure who would be the best to answer this question. But can someone talk to me about the financials, particularly as it says, you know, Norman Forward could pay for all of the promised projects? One, does that include the Senior Center? Two, how are we looking with this and our financial stress test, considering these unplanned land acquisitions? Thanks, Anthony.
I'm Anthony Francisco, the Finance Director and Staff to the Citizens' Financial Oversight Board. I think Councilmember Bierman is referring to the pro forma analysis that is presented to the CFOB roughly on a semi-annual basis. It is an attachment to your document. It's actually the last two pages. One page is the general assumption that we make for sales tax growth. One is a sort of more modest projection. And in that more modest projection, it does show that there are some difficulties in some future years if we do all of the projects at their full budgets. And if sales tax growth comes in at that more modest rate, we'd have some decisions to make, both as a staff, as a council, as a CFOB. Does that mean we would not be able to do some of the projects at the proposed rate, or some of the other costs that have been built into those pro forma analysis? We do those decisions in the future. Does that respond to your question?
Yeah. But, you know, let's say things kind of go fairly well. Without setting aside these land acquisitions that have popped up, would we be able to pay for the Senior Center in addition to all the other projects?
Okay. So, the wording of all of the promised projects, I think, refers to the projects that were budgeted for. And if we do all of those projects at their full budgeted costs, and if sales tax does not grow at the projected rate, then we would have to make some decisions about cutting some of those costs, wherever they may be. And yes, we would not be able to add any unbudgeted projects. So, again, we'd have to make those decisions in the future.
And then, adding in, of course, these unexpected land acquisitions, that obviously stresses these projections even further.
Yes, ma'am. Now, as you know, the projections were for the ongoing lease purchase of the Griffin land for the soccer facility. And the negotiations with the Department of Mental Health might reduce some of those costs. We ran quite a bit below budget for the East Library Project. We're running below budget for the Central Library Project. So, again, it's a fluid, in-motion reality. But if all of the projections are as they were when we did those performance, when we did the budgets back in 2015, then yes, we're going to have some difficulties and some decisions to make in the future if sales tax doesn't grow.
Thanks, Anthony. And I would just say that my last, my last point is that I do think, I do think we need to be extremely cautious, that there is a fine line between negotiating and being strung along. And I personally am feeling like we're starting to get to that point. I'm going to be really hard pressed to agree to any additional spending on land that we don't have secured. And I think, I hope that we've all learned a valuable lesson about promising things and not having land to put them on, because we're the ones who feel that blowback when things don't happen. So, that's where I am on that.
Okay. Councilmember Castleberry.
Just a quick question for you, Anthony. You were involved in MAPS I.
I was actually on the Citizens' I was actually on the Citizens Committee for MAPS 2, MAPS for Kids.
It's one, they ran a little short on their.
Their budgets, yeah.
And so how did they address it?
Um, the, there is a basic difference between the MAPS projects and Norman Forward projects in that the major projects for Norman Forward, uh, we, we decided to bond finance them and, and to, and to build the projects before the funds had actually been collected. MAPS made a different assumption. They wanted to wait until the, the, the funds actually came in. So they were pay-as-you-go projects. So they were moving along with the, uh, promised projects and, and some of them were coming in above budget. Their sales tax projections were coming in a bit below budget originally. And so the last project to be done or that, that had been promised was the Arena Project, which we now know to be Chesapeake, uh, Energy Center. There was not enough money to do that project. So the city of Oklahoma City was confronted with a decision whether or not to do that project or whether to ask the voters for more funds. And they made the decision to ask the voters for more funds in the, in an extension of that original MAPS sales tax for about six months.
So it was a six-month extension?
Yes, sir.
So they just did a six, I think we've discussed this before.
Yeah, I just couldn't remember.
They didn't go back and, and do a whole new MAPS at that point. They just went back and asked for.
Yeah, they very clearly stated what the, what the proposal was, was to finish out the projects. I think the, the catchphrase was do it right or something like that. And then it was just a six-month extension of the sales tax that the voters had approved.
And what, and what was the term of the first one, the first MAPS?
I believe it was, I believe it was 11 years.
11 years.
First one.
And Norman Ford's 15 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Anthony, while you're, you're up there, I was, I was looking. I, I couldn't put my eyes on it. So I thought I would just ask you, you said in outer years, we'd have to make some decisions based on the current projections of, you know, where we're at. I know, I know you've sometimes showed us on other budgets, you know, that, that when it goes negative, upside down, when are we projecting for Norman Forward if we implement the projects as scheduled? And they are on budget and are, let's just say that our, you know, uh, sales trends, you know, continue as they are. Uh, because I believe I've heard you say that, you know, it's kind of a new world and we can't necessarily expect things to go back to the way that they were. When would we be in a situation where we would not have the money to fund the projects for a certain year?
By the.
Not run out of, not up, not run out of money at the end of the, the deal, but not be able to keep pace with the projects as planned?
Yeah, by the projections that we have, um, in these pro forms, it will be somewhere around fiscal year 2022. So about for, about four years from now. Then you have to look at that's, that last page.
Okay, would that allow, based on those current projections, would that include, uh, or allow the completion of the indoor aquatic? Setting aside all the land issues I asked about earlier, the indoor aquatic center, the indoor sports facility and the softball and baseball complex, are those planned to be done before that?
Those will have been planned to be done before that.
Is that because they're, at least the two bigger ones are being done with bond money?
Yes, there, there, there is an assumption in those performance that there is, um, bond issues in three sales. We've done two of them already and a third one to, to do all of the major brick and mortar projects. That's, that's built into those projections.
And when are we planning to do this last bond that would pay for the indoor aquatic center and indoor sports facility?
We, as those larger and final projects have been pushed back because of the land acquisition, um, issues, the, the sale of the bonds has actually also been pushed back. Uh, we had originally planned to do the third sale of bonds about the end of this calendar year. So I think right now we would need to be, you know, we're just kind of, as we're drawing down the money from the two issues that we've sold, um, when we're getting to the place that that money is about to run out. And I think that'll be about a, a year and a half from now, we'd be going forward for the next sale.
Okay, and I know that there are some conditions on those bonds, like you have to either issue within a certain period of time or have the work done after you issue them at a certain period of time. Are there things like that that we need to be thinking about now because of this looks like delay in securing the land? As do those projects and the timing of this last bond?
Yeah, you need to have in your mind that whenever you issue debt, whenever you approve, whether it's a general obligation bond or revenue bond or a tax apportionment bond like these are, under SEC and IRS regulations, you basically have to spend the money, uh, reasonably assume that the money will be spent on the projects that you said you were going to do within three years of the issuance of, of the bonds. That's one of the reasons that we would delay this third issuance. Uh, because we are going to, to, to spend the money in the first two issuances within those three years. But we wouldn't possibly, you know, if we, if we sold those on the schedule that we had originally anticipated, we probably wouldn't have spent all of the money within three years of the final issuance.
So if I understand what you're saying correctly, that means that those projects have to be done because that presumably means that, you know, if we have to spend all the money, the projects have to be done to pay them in full.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Anthony.
This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any public comments? Final comments from the council? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge receipt of the report. Councilmembers, you may cast your votes. All votes have been cast and acknowledgement of receipt of the report passes unanimously. This brings us to item 29, is a contract with Springstead Waters to provide recruitment services to the council for the city of Norman for the selection of a city manager for the city of Norman and budget appropriation from the general fund balance. I'll entertain a motion to approve or reject the contract.
Motion approved.
Approve second.
At this time, I would like to recognize Gaila Hicks.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Gaila Hicks, Director of Human Resources. Just to give you a little background, um, on this contract, to assist the council in hiring a permanent city manager, uh, the interim city manager, Mary Rupp asked the HR department to get RFPs from, uh, qualified firms that do this type of search. So we did, we put out, uh, requests. We got three RFPs back from SGR, uh, Springstead Water and Gov HR USA. After council reviewed those proposals, we then set up interviews and, and for the companies to do a presentation with SGR and Springstead Water. After the interviews and the, uh, presentations were made, the council got back with interim city manager and she therefore, uh, brought a contract, uh, had us prepare a contract or whatever for Springstead Water. And that's the process that we went through.
Are there questions from the council? This is an opportunity for members of the public to make comments regarding this item. Are there any comments? Final comments from the council? Councilmember Castleberry.
Thank you. I, I pulled this off consent. Well, I think Springsteen Waters was, was impressive in their interviews. Both of them were. I'm not going to vote for them. I believe that, uh, SGR was a more qualified firm. They've done hirings in Oklahoma. Um, Springsteen has not hired anybody in Oklahoma. They are nationwide. Uh, I think they'll do a fine job. But I think as far as, um, I just think SGR was a more qualified, um, firm. And, um, so I'm going to vote no on this. Not necessarily because I think Springs Waters is not qualified. I just think that, that they're not the, the best choice. And I was kind of surprised that. I thought after the presentation, it was pretty clear, in my mind anyway, that having, having somebody, um, located in Fort Worth or Dallas, only a couple of hours away from us versus somebody in Minnesota, who could get here, maybe if it's not snowing flights. I just, I liked the presentation a little bit better. So it's, it's tough when you're, you know, this is like interviewing an employee, you know, when you have a group of people and one person likes applicant A and one person likes applicant B and they're both really good. I know there's necessarily a right answer, but on this particular one, um, I just pulled this off because I think SGR was, was a better, uh, suit for, for our particular needs.
Councilmember Hickman.
I just want to say I'm glad in a way we did pull this off, uh, because this is a really important, um, discussion in our community. It's been 11 years since we hired the last city manager, when Steve was hired, I believe. Uh, so this doesn't happen every day. It doesn't happen all that often in Norman and that's probably a good thing. And so it's good for the public to be aware that your council is selecting a consultant to assist them in the process of identifying, recruiting, uh, and ultimately, uh, the hiring process of a new city manager for our community. And so that's a big decision and something that, uh, council is going to be working on over the next several months, uh, once we get this consultant on board. And so I do encourage all of you to, uh, stay plugged in and, and aware of that ongoing discussion and process. Because ultimately, the hiring of our city manager is the person, um, long-term who, you know, runs the day-to-day operations of the city and, and manages our staff and, and helps lead the vision of where we want our community to go. And so it will be an important decision for, uh, for a city council and this is the first step. So I did want to take this opportunity, since we did pull it off consent, to highlight that. So, uh, everybody here or watching at home is aware that we are getting that, that ball rolling and, um, looking forward to getting that process moving along.
Councilmember Holman.
I would just have to agree with my colleague, councilmember Castleberry, um, on the selection. I, I think both were really good firms, but I definitely, uh, felt more, um, impressed by SGR and, um, what I think they might be able to do for Norman. So I think I will probably voting against this one, uh, tonight as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
I'm in that vote as well. I was kind of surprised to see that on the consent docket, honestly. Uh, what impressed me the most about SGR was not only just her presentation and familiarity with, I think, our community, uh, profile, was their list of recommendations. They had a lot of mayors that I know from the Oklahoma Municipal League, along with Missy Dean, who just left the Oklahoma Municipal League. And I think that had some considerable weight. So I too will be voting no on this recommendation.
We had, um, two different firms, uh, that were brought forward to us. There are not a lot of firms, um, in the United States that specialize in doing, um, selections of CEOs for cities and public entities. This is a rather specialized area. Both of the, uh, firms that we interviewed, um, Springstead Waters and SGR were top-rated firms. I think they both do a good job for us. I am in the camp with the people that thought that SGR was the better of the firms. Primarily not that they're more professional or have more experience and that's, that's not it at all. It was their, the massive amount of experience they've had regionally and the fact that they're located in North Texas where I felt like they would be very accessible. So I will also be voting against this. Councilmember Scott.
Thank you. I'm, uh, going to go ahead and vote for this one. I liked both presentations, but what really struck me about the first one was the, um, the involvement, the surveys that they do, that they conduct. Um, I understand they're out of state, but I think that's okay. Um, they'll have an outside perspective as well. And then I also wanted to make sure, when we asked during the interviews, that, um, we did a survey for staff because they're going to be working with you guys. And so that's, I think, most important. You know, we have high turnover. You guys are more tenured. While it's extremely important that we have community involvement, I think both firms offered that, but, um, I feel firmly about the, the first one. I think her name was Karen. She was nice.
Councilmember Wilson.
I was not here when we interviewed these folks. I, I'm a little bit, uh, confused as to why we have them if we didn't have a consensus. I, I thought that we all went into a meeting while I was gone in Paris. Just throw that out there. But, um, I, I, I thought you guys talked about this, so I didn't do a lot of research. I'm going to vote for the national firm and I will make, I've made this on the dais, on the fly, because I would like to go outside our current situation to find talent. So that would be my reasoning.
Councilmember Bierman.
So I think it's, I think, I think it's just fascinating how a group of people can sit in the same room and feel so entirely differently about what we heard.
It really is.
When recently faced with a, a couple of great candidates at, uh, at Annie's, I ended up hiring them both, unfortunately. Can't do that this time. So, um, I am going to vote for Springstead Waters. I was extremely impressed and I think what struck me the most is that they sent their A squad. They sent their senior vice president. They cared a lot about, about this potential contract. And they sent, they sent the people with the most experience and came out swinging. And I'm looking forward to having a national reach. I think that there's something to be said for having someone with a local focus. But, uh, I want us to look everywhere and I want us to look for the best. And I think a firm that has really spread out their searches and looked for, and recruited on behalf of cities all over the country, um, I really liked what they presented. And, uh, I definitely think when someone sends us their best, that means they're committed. And they really, and they really are, are taking this seriously. So I'm excited to vote for Springstead Waters and looking forward to seeing what they bring to the table.
Okay, um, just so that there's no confusion, both of these are national firms. Both of them do recruitment all over the United States. So they're, they're both national firms. It's just they're, one of them has more experience in this region. But we could argue all night about them. They were both good. So if there's no more comments, motion on the floor is to approve the contract. The four voting against, councilmember Holman, councilmember Clark, councilmember Castleberry, Mayor Miller. Brings us to, um, item 34, which is a resolution requesting a recommendation from the statutory review committee of how to end the University North Park financing project cost funding mechanism utilizing sales tax increment as soon as possible without damaging what benefit the Norman Public Schools might be receiving in state school funding by virtue of the UNP TIF district. I'll entertain a motion to adopt or reject the resolution.
So moved?
Second.
At this time, I will recognize Jeff Bryant to make a few comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item was our November 6th, uh, study session regarding the UNP TIF. Uh, council expressed some concern regarding the health of the city's general fund. Has expressed, uh, a lack of confidence that a lifestyle center project would meet the criteria for the UNP TIF incentive, incentives. Uh, expressed a lack of confidence that that would ever materialize. In addition, council has expressed some concern that a cultural facility project in UNP TIF would not materialize. Uh, council also has expressed concern regarding possible actions. Uh, the, whatever possible action they take would not negatively impact the Norman Public Schools. So this resolution, after that, uh, study session, it may be another example where everybody's in the same room but walks away with a different idea of what we walked out with. But the resolution seeks a recommendation of the statutory TIF committee, uh, on how to best, uh, end the TIF and end that apportionment without damaging, uh, what benefit the Norman Public Schools might be receiving by virtue of this UNP TIF district. Now, when we drafted this, it was believed that the resolution that's in your packet was consistent with the direction given by city council. On November, uh, November 6th, uh, the city manager thought that, I thought that, and our, uh, finance director certainly thought that. And so the draft language then, was then set out to council members late Thursday afternoon. late Thursday afternoon. And while the city manager did hear from some council members regarding that resolution language, there did not appear to be a consensus of the modifications to the resolution. So what you have in your packet tonight is what staff had prepared, but we do understand that this is council's resolution and that there may be some modifications that would need to be made to the resolution prior to it being passed. And so with that, we'll just turn it over to council to shape the resolution as you feel like is best appropriate for what you're intending to accomplish.
Okay. At this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Hickman, who has some amendments.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three amendments, and I've been advised that I have to propose them. Has three separate amendments and three groupings. For those of you who are here, I think there were some copies made available. And those of you at home, I'm sorry, just try to follow along with me. The First Amendment will be to address Sections 30 and 31. And I will read to you the, how the paragraph will now read as proposed to be amended. Whereas city council desires to end the University North Park tax increment financing, UNP TIF project cost funding mechanism in total, both sales tax increment and ad valorem increment immediately, but without unduly harming Norman Public Schools by ending the TIF earlier than it would have if allowed to continue as it is presently, as further discussed in Section 33 herein. And amending Section 31 to read as follows. Whereas the city council would like to receive a recommendation from the Statutory TIF Committee as soon as possible, but not later than 30 days after the passage of this resolution regarding how the UNP project plan can be restructured, ended, or otherwise modified, such as removing projects and, if necessary, refunding revenue accumulated in the UNP TIF to the taxing jurisdictions to accomplish the intent of city council has set out in Section 30 above, which was the paragraph I have just read. So that would be amendment number one. Just in a summary fashion, I would just say the intent of those changes are to make it clear, at least from perspective of the folks that I represent, at least in Ward 4, and the feedback I've heard from the community, it's clear from my constituents and the small business owners that I represent, that they want the TIF ended. And that means ended in total, not just has to the sales tax increment portion, and that the project costs, the projects, I should say, that remain are not considered to be priority projects in the community, such that further investment, whether sales tax or ad valorem dollars, are something that, like I said, the folks that I represent have indicated that they want to continue to support. And so that's the underlying purpose of Sections 30 and 31. And to be clear, without this amendment, the original resolution actually extends the term of the lease, extends the term of the TIF, as opposed to this proposed resolution would actually end the TIF or start that process.
I need a second to his amendment.
Second.
Council comment. Councilmember Castleberry.
I would like a clarification from Councilman Hickman on his statement that, as written, it would extend the TIF, because I missed that part. But, because I think if we take those two projects out, it ends the TIF. So I just need a little further explanation on that. But I would like to offer a friendly amendment in that, in Section 30, who says "and" ad valorem increment, take that part out. That's not our money. And so if the ad valoreums want to contribute to the TIF, that should be up to them. We have the Center City TIF, which is ad valorem only, and I've heard numerous times, particularly from some of the people that you represent, that the Center City TIF is fine. It's an ad valorem-only tax TIF, so it's fine. We don't care about that. It's ad valorem only, therefore it's a good TIF. Well, if we're going to, it sounds like we're kind of changing this to an ad valorem-only TIF. And so I think that should be consistent with the Center City TIF that we passed unanimously as a council for that. So I would just offer that, we take that out. I think it still accomplishes the goal of ending the TIF from the city standpoint as far as any sales tax being appropriated to that. Takes those funds out. And I just think it's kind of presumptuous of us to tell the taxing authorities whether they should or should not participate. I understand it's going to go to Statutory Review Committee, and they can come back and do what they want to do. But I would like to send something to them that is hopefully not amended, so that we can all get on the same page and wrap this up. So I would, I would offer that amendment to basically just remove the two words "and" ad valorem increment immediately.
Okay. Okay. Are you asking for Councilmember Hickman to change his amendment?
I believe I have.
Or are you?
I believe I have to, because it's a friendly amendment.
Okay. You're not, you're not making a motion to make an amendment of his amendment? Okay. All right.
With all due respect to Councilmember Castleberry, I'm not agreeable to that friendly amendment. And I just, I guess, want to clarify that if you look at Paragraph 29, those of you who have a copy in your hand out there, and you subtract $25 million and change in outstanding project costs, or subtract from $25 million in outstanding project costs, the $10.7 million of cash in the UNP account, that leaves about $14 million. The ad valorem portion of the increment alone, which is $2 million, the sales tax portion's about $4 million. So right now, the UNP TIF is putting $6 million a year in. So 14 million divided by six is a little over two years. If nothing changed, the TIF would be, the TIF would end as a matter of law, because the project costs would be fully funded. What we're debating tonight is whether or not to end it before that two-year term of it fully funding itself if we do nothing. And if you take out the sales tax increment, the $4 million, but you don't take out any project costs, 14 million divided by two is seven years. So the resolution has initially presented causes the TIF going from fully funding if nothing is done in a little over two years, to not being fully funded and therefore ending in seven, about seven years. And so that's why fundamentally I'm not agreeable to the resolution has presented, or to Councilmember Castleberry's friendly amendment, because it does extend the life of the TIF almost five years if we only include the sales tax portion and not the ad valorem portion as well.
But in the item right below that, which is the companion item, you, we are asking them to consider modifying or restructuring the TIF and, such as removing projects, which would be one or the other of the projects, and if necessary, I would not have put this in here, refunding revenue accumulated in the UNP TIF to the taxing jurisdictions. I mean, so to me, we're not finished with this process yet. You're just sending it to the Statutory Review Committee. And also, when we struck the majority of city council, I think that that is necessary to put in there. I don't think every single city council person in that meeting agreed to this, to this language. So I think in terms of what was said in the meeting, that majority needs to stay in there. So I'm saying I can't vote for it like that. Councilmember Wilson.
Wow. A couple things. I believe that what we talked about, what I asked for in our study session was to end the TIF, to remove the projects, and end apportionment, which, in my opinion, that's all the tax dollars, ad valorem, all the, all the money going into it. So I agree with this amendment that Hickman is, Hickman, sorry, Councilmember Hickman is proposing. And I don't think, I'm curious, it's just this is a thought that occurred to me, Jeff, maybe you can speak to it. Can the counties create their own TIF at all? That's not a thing. So we created this TIF. So the answer to my question is no, the county cannot create their own TIF. We, as a city, instituted this TIF. We asked our taxing jurisdictions to participate in a set of projects that we thought, as a city, back in 2008, were good, wonderful projects, and a lot of them are finished. We have two projects that my constituents are telling me they have no further wish for. Constituents across the city are telling me they do not desire these projects to happen. And I think to continue to take the county's money, not put our money in, is actually kind of a shady way to do things. It's not really a really good partner.
That's what we did in the Center City TIF.
They participated in that discussion. Right now, we're just saying, no, 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 we just want to take our money out of it. Like, I understand that we had a whole discussion for infrastructure projects in Center City. It was a whole different scenario, where we all sit down and talk about the same thing at the same time. Now we're talking about pulling projects, taking, like, I think it'd be crazy to just kind of come in and say, well, we just want to take these out and, and take our money, and you guys can sit down and finish that out. Also, that money belongs to our constituents. That money, that's landlords in our city that are, that are putting money into that ad valorem, even though those are county dollars. Those are our constituents, and they're asking us to do this. So I support this amendment.
Councilmember Bierman.
So I think, first of all, it's important to keep in mind that we're simply asking the statutory committee for a recommendation. We are not telling them that projects will be removed. We're asking them for a recommendation and asking them if they would like projects to be removed. So if we are stating our desire to end the TIF, because if we pass this resolution, we're passing it as a council body. And so I do think that it needs to say, whereas council, versus whereas a majority of council. Because once this is passed, if it passes, then we are speaking as one body, that we do need to leave in the sales tax and ad valorem increment. Because if the statutory committee comes back and says we don't want to remove projects, then we are stuck in the situation that Councilmember Hickman suggests, that we will be trying to remove our sales tax increment and extending the life of that TIF. And I'm not going to support any half measures that prolong the life of the TIF in any way. If a future council wants to pass a new TIF with a sales tax baseline at some future level, they are more than welcome to do so. But I do not want to see this TIF with the 2006 sales tax baseline be extended any longer than it needs to be. So I am going to be supporting the amendment as written, removing both sales tax increment and ad valorem increment. Because end means end, not just the city's end. No half measures. I support this ending and eliminating the sales tax increment and ad valorem increment, in my opinion, is the way to do that.
Okay. Before I call on Councilmember Hickman, just to make clear, my understanding is, in the TIF, the ad valorem money is not being paid by our homeowners. The ad valorem money is being paid by the businesses in the TIF. It's their, it's their property taxes that they're paying.
So those people don't live in Norman?
They're the business owners. They have their businesses in the TIF. They, they choose to be there because of its advantages. Okay. Councilmember Hickman.
I guess I have a question real quick for Anthony before I make my other comment. Anthony, I don't know if you remember, last month, I sent you an email and asked about, you know, when the conversation was going on in the community about, you know, what does it mean to end the TIF and were those options presented? And you sent me back a response. And I'd just like for you to summarize or to tell us when people talk about ending the TIF. What does that mean?
Well, as we discussed at the November 4 meeting, at least as I understand it, ending the TIF can have two different connotations. One connotation is ending the tax apportionment. And if you consider the TIF to be ended when tax apportionment ends, then your amendment would end the TIF effectively. But remember that if the tax apportionment ends, but the cash that is currently on hand is still on hand to pay for authorized projects, the TIF hasn't effectively ended, because you still have money and you still have projects to be completed, whatever project the council decides to remain authorized. So I think the definition of ending the TIF has to be established first. Are you going to cut out all the projects? Or are you going to cut out enough projects such that you have enough funds on hand that you don't have to apportion taxes anymore?
So, and I think that's what you said in your email. So essentially, there's kind of, I'll say, two options to get to the point that we, as a matter of law, end the TIF. One option is, we have $10.7 million in the account now, and we have $25 million in projects. We could either lower down the projects to $10.7 million, prioritize the projects that are in there, that we're going to spend the cash we've collected on, on projects, and then that's it. And that's something, for example, the Statutory Review Committee could advise council on. You want to end it? Well, we think these are the most important projects left that we say, if we're going to prioritize spending the $10.7 million that we have, these are ones that we think that should be done.
Yes, sir.
Or they could say, you guys want out? Well, let's take out every project and refund the $10.7 million on some basis to all of the taxing jurisdictions. That'd be the other extreme, right?
That's correct.
And about what percentage of sales tax dollars relative to ad valorem or to the total has the city put in so far into the TIF? If we were to, let's say hypothetically, do a refund based on the percentages that of sales tax in versus ad valorem?
To date, about 76% of the funds have come from sales tax apportionments.
Okay. And would you agree with my comment earlier that if we just took out sales tax and didn't change any project costs, that would actually extend the life of the TIF?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Anthony. The only other comment I wanted to-
Anthony, how much? You've told, you've said this in several meetings. How, how long? If we just do?
If you, if you don't change any of the project authorizations, and you eliminate the sales tax apportionment, and just make it a property tax, then yes, seven years is not, it's close. You know, I might say six and a half, but it's, it's something like seven years.
And then if we took out a project, then it would be less than that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's, that's-
One thing I would point out, remember that the property taxes are almost like a lump sum. It's, it's, the collection of property taxes comes in, you know, December and March. And if we, if we continue the property tax apportionment, at least until next month, then we're going to get another lump sum of about $2 million come April. So just, just keep that in mind. And, you know, property tax money coming in is a good thing.
Okay. That, that's good enough, that $2 million. That's helpful. All right. Councilmember Scott.
A question that has nothing to do with the language of the amendment. It, I think it might be a you, a Jeff question or an Anthony question. It's about the bid. Does this effectively in the bid as well for maintenance on Legacy Park? I just want to confirm that. Like, right? Legacy Park, we talked about this a little bit on Tuesday?
Yeah. There's enough money cash on hand to cover the remaining commitment of the bid costs. I think there's, what, Anthony, about another $125,000, $150,000?
After this fiscal year, which we've already spent, it's about $75,000.
Okay. And then they can always extend that to continue maintenance, correct?
Yeah. The bids normally statutorily go for a 10-year time period. And so we set this up, so at the end of the 10 years, the property owners could decide whether they wanted to do another bid themselves without assistance.
Without the city's assistance?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Great. And I just want to, again, express my gratitude for my fellow councilpeople who have expressed that they would like to protect Robinson, and that's all.
We will not forget Robinson.
Thank you.
Under no circumstances are we going to-
I made that very clear.
The Robinson interchange, yes. Councilmember Castleberry.
Okay, just to follow up on that. Anthony? I was looking back there. You blended in with the seats, man. The sweater there, I couldn't see you. So, worst-case scenario, the statutory review committee comes back and says, we're doing away with all the projects. And his example of, we're just going to refund all the money, we're not going to do any of that stuff. Is the Robinson Street project still, those funds are still available because we have already allocated them, they're already budgeted in a separate part?
That would be up to council's discretion.
So to be clear, it would take, it would take an act of council to not do the Robinson Street project?
Yes, it would, you would, you would have to, to-
They have affirmative action by council to not do that project, because that money's already been appropriated-
That money's already been appropriated.
In the budget process.
Yes, sir.
So, so as long as nobody on council does away with Robinson Street funding, no matter what happens with the TIF, we're still protected.
Let's do a resolution.
Well, I actually would like to have that, because council changes every year, and, this is a multi-year project, and I think it's a very important, it's one of the worst traffic areas in town, and I've heard several people commit to it, and you may not be here to fulfill that commitment.
Whatever council decides to do is going to be an amendment to the project plan. And in that amendment, one of the things that you might say is, you're maintaining the appropriation that we made for the Robinson project.
Do we need to do that in this?
You wouldn't necessarily-
In this resolution, or should we do that separately? I don't want to junkie this up.
The, the project plan amendment would be a separate thing, coming out of the recommendation from the statutory review committee.
So we can address it then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Everybody's good with that? Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're ready for any more council comments. All right, we're ready for public comments. This is about the amendment. The amendments to number 30 and 31. Motion on the floor is to amend items 30 and 31 of the resolution. Councilmembers, you can cast your votes.
The motion passes by a vote of eight to one, voting against Mayor Miller.
Is this your next amendment?
Amendment number two is the inclusion or the addition of section- and it reads, "The city manager and staff are hereby directed to prepare proposal, proposals using revenues that will be added to the city's general fund from the sales tax that would have been in the UNP TIF increment to fund some or all of the Norman Public Schools' current expenditures on the PSSD II School Resource Officer Program, consistent with the ballot measure approved by the voters of the city of Norman, and consistent with the city council's objectives as set out in section 30 above, and provide this proposal to city council and the Norman University, Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee in furtherance of the city council's intent to end the UNP TIF now." And I guess I need a second. And this, section 33 is referenced in section 30, and I think, on my behalf, and, and other councilmembers can chime in, I think we're all sensitive to the fact that if we end the TIF early, early meaning quicker than the two or so years that the TIF would fully fund on its own if we did nothing, which seems to be probably the baseline, and based on my discussions with representatives of the school district, they simply want a runway to know for planning purposes of, of any changes we've made to the TIF so that they can properly plan and budget accordingly, because my understanding is that there is a potential reduction in overall revenue to the school district by us ending the TIF early versus letting it stay as is and continue for the remaining two or so years, two to three years that it would take for it to fully fund and end as a matter of law. And so the concept here is that the School Resource Officer Program is something that's already been passed by the citizens, something that we already have a memorandum of agreement with the school district, and something which we're already cost-sharing the costs associated with that program, and that if the city needs to pick up a little bit more of the share of those costs to keep the school district whole, then I support that, and that's the, the intent of this amendment. And I would just say on top of that, that if we do receive funds back into the general fund, I would hope that we could also begin to have the discussion about fully funding the PSSD program as approved by the voters, because it's my understanding, and I think Anthony could talk about this if we wanted to ask him, that there are some, at least positions that have not been hired yet and put in place because of budgetary constraints, that that be something that we focus on, is to ensure that we deliver on the promises to the voters and fulfill that public safety request.
I would maybe offer a friendly here, a friendly amendment about specifying a time period for which we would pay for this, like we talked about, maybe two years, but making sure that it's in here so we don't get stuck paying for this forever.
Are you saying that-
He wants a timeframe, I know.
We talked about funding, funding the SRO program at Norman Public Schools, picking up the tab for the money they may be losing by us ending the TIF, but we had talked about having a time limit on that as well, of perhaps two years. We'll fund that program for two years so that Norman Public Schools can, so we can lessen the blow to them of us ending the TIF. I think was-
I guess, my only pause, Councilmember Holman, is that I don't know the exact timeline, and I'm looking at the language in, in section 30 that specifically says, you know, to, without unduly harming Norman Public Schools by ending the UNP TIF earlier than it would have if allowed to continue as it is presently, as further discussed in section 33. I think, in, in my mind at least, the idea was to communicate to the statutory review committee that we want to hold them harmless, if you will, for the period of time of the differential of ending this early by making this change and ending the TIF earlier than letting it play out, and that referencing to section 33, that this is kind of a proposed idea, and let staff prepare the detailed plan that says, okay, here's the net differential. Because I don't even know the net differential of like, how much money is Norman Public Schools losing? And this is something I think that even in the statutory review committee, with the school district being a part of this, is why I tried not to get into the weeds too much. But I, I understand what you're saying, and I don't disagree, that, you know, we don't want to get to where we, I don't think we can afford to pay for the School Resource Officers in total, and I don't think that's what the ballot measure intended either. I think it reads like it'd be, there'd be some joint payment as well. But at the same time, you know, not knowing all the numbers and all the details was to kind of provide them with the roadmap so that when the statutory review committee convenes, you know, Brenda Burkett from the school district and Anthony can work together and say, okay, here's the net differential, here's kind of what's left, and here's what we pay in our SRO dollars as the school district, and come up with a plan that says, okay, and then coupled with that, will probably maybe have to be an amendment to that memorandum of agreement to, to kind of maybe more, more memorialize that. So that's in my mind, kind of what I was thinking, and that's a lot to put in this, in this change, but I'm happy to consider any language that you-
I, I would just want to make sure that we're not committing ourselves, by approving this amendment, we're not committing ourselves to fully funding the School Resource Officer Program indefinitely.
No, I certainly, I certainly don't think that's the case. I mean, especially considering this is a resolution to the statutory review committee to then provide a recommendation back to us. I was merely trying to provide guidance to them that we are sensitive to the fact that this could lead to a reduction in funding to Norman Public Schools, and here is a way where we want to not unduly harm them by ending it early, and, and how can we pay for a part of their expenditures that they're already expending?
Okay. I think I could be satisfied with that. If there's other comments, we'll see. Thanks.
Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Castleberry, or Bierman, I'm sorry.
It's a weird one to get confused. I know, I know. On your best day, maybe. I will say, I do, I do agree with Councilmember Holman that this is something that, at least in the final ordinance or resolution, however the final recommendation comes back to us. I think that that's something we need to make sure that we're not overly committing ourselves to this. As I said in the, the study session where we talked about this, I'm fairly agnostic about the SRO program being the source of how we not unduly burden Norman Public Schools. If this is the best way to do it, that's fine with me. If this is the way Norman Public Schools would have it, that's fine with me. But I, I will, I will be supporting this amendment. I just wanted to express my meh feeling about, about doing this via the SRO program. You know, I think, I think that it's done perfectly fine here in Norman, but as, as Councilmember Holman said in the study session, it has not been, not been so great nationwide. So if that's the way, if that's the way we choose to do it, that's fine with me. I'll support this amendment because it gets us one step closer to the goal. But I, I do think we need to make sure when it comes back to us that whatever final form this takes, that we make sure that we're very clear about how long we're going to be doing this.
Councilmember Castleberry.
I'm not going to second your, your amendment's dead. So, anyway, I appreciate your concerns, and I think that's, I think section 30 addresses those concerns as far as that timeframe goes through. I think in the PSSD ballot language, it says it's a cost-sharing arrangement. Now, keep in mind that PSSD is a permanent tax. So we will be permanently funding the SROs. This is not just a three-year deal. I mean, it may drop back to 50/50, it may ramp up a little bit during what would have been, but I don't want people to be in an illusion that we're only going to fund the SROs for, for three years. So will we, we'll, if we want to drop back, drop back to our original 50/50 arrangement that we told the voters that we were going to do, then, then I think we understand that. But the PSSD is a permanent tax, and those officers are paid out of that fund. Now, they will go back to the general fund, I get that, but the tax collections will go back through there once those capital projects are done. Do fully support the, the SRO programs. I don't know if people know this or not, but Norman North is the third, has the third highest incidence of incidences in, in, of school shootings or use of SROs in the state. So it is not, it is a real concern as far as school safety goes in our local area. So I want to make sure that we, we don't do anything to provide that. I understand the school thought that the school should provide their own public safety, not the police, but very comfortable with our SRO program. I think we monitor it well, they do a great job, and I think we need to step this up, fully funding. And so I am going to support this amendment because this checks the main box that I said as far as ending the TIF. As long as the school system was made whole, I, I was fine with it. I think this does that. So I am going to support this amendment.
Councilmember Wilson.
I think my concerns were addressed, but I'll just say I support the amendment, and I had a little bit of concern about the timeframe, but I feel like I've been satisfied with this, so thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
I appreciate the, the comments and, and the potential or the maybe awkward crafting of the amendment, and I hope I could clarify that with my comments. I did want to say, just so it's clear for everybody, that, well, I know there are some that have reservations, let's say, about the School Resource Officer Program, that it, it was put to a vote of the people, it did pass, it includes 13 school resource officers to be placed in schools across Norman Public Schools. As somebody who has spoken up here about community trust and trusted in your local government, I think it's important that we deliver on the things that you vote on. And some of you that were here early heard my questions about Norman Ford and my concerns about us delivering on those promises. And so that was part of the idea of why the School Resource Officer was proposed as a way to hold them harmless. I see the chief back there, and I know in my conversations with the school district reps, that they want the other four positions that are not currently hired to be hired and put in place. And so you're, you're already paying for nine school resource officers through PSSD. So that's already happening, and that will, like Councilmember Castleberry said, continue. The concept here is that whatever amount of money the school district loses, once our finance people and the schools' finance people get together and figure out what that dollar amount is, the concept here is that the city would pick up that cost for that period of time of shortening the, the TIF life, so that the city, so that the school district has a runway, a lead time to make planning and budget changes necessary, and to ensure the continuity of that School Resource Officer Program as it is right now. It would be my hope that long-term, or the next step would be, as we get funds back into the general fund, that this council make sure that we take some of those dollars, because some people have said, well, what are y'all going to do with that money? And I just wanted to make it clear that I do think it's important that we fulfill the promise to what you voted on, on the bond, I mean, on the PSSD, and that we get those other officers hired and in the schools to fully implement the PSSD programs that the voters did approve. And so that would be kind of a second step, and it's not, it's, you've already voted on, voted on it, and the sales tax is already in place. And so it's just a matter at this point of fulfilling our promises to the voters from my perspective.
Councilmember Scott.
So I'm going to support this amendment. Just have a quick comment about, since we're making steps about fiscal responsibility and making the school whole. I believe it was said last Tuesday that the net loss to the NPS was going to be around $200,000, but that's, I'm pretty sure what they agreed to spend on drug testing students. So just, just a comment.
I don't think so. This brings us to public comments. Final council comments. Well, I certainly wouldn't be against anything that is an effort to protect the school system. I, I will point out that by doing this, we, we wouldn't be needing to do this if we let the ad valorem in place, because the school system was investing, and they were getting their own money back, and that's how they were funding this program. So by doing what we're doing, we are replacing money that they would have been getting if we didn't do this with money from our, our general fund. I do understand we will have more money because we would be getting the money back from the TIF. If there are no other comments, councilmembers, you may cast your vote on the amendment. We're still on the amendment.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to amend the resolution to add section 33 regarding the School Resource Officers in Norman Public Schools passes unanimously.
Councilmember Hickman.
Okay, amendment number three, the, I need to clarify that the, the three paragraphs following the one we just did, amendment number two, added in section 33, and the three remaining paragraphs should be read number 34, 35, and 36. And the new paragraph, number 36, there's a blank in there currently that was on the agenda, and so the amendment is to insert 30 days thereafter in that blank so that the time provision in, the new paragraph 36 would correspond to the time provision in, in section 31. So that's the amendment number three. Is there a second?
Second.
Any council comments? Public comments? Seeing no comments?
Seeing no comments, council, you may vote on this final amendment.
The motion on the floor is to require the statutory review committee to report back no later than 30 days thereafter, and that motion passes unanimously.
Okay, but don't we have to go back to a discussion? Because we haven't had a discussion. Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as amended. Are there any comments on the resolution as amended? Comments from the audience? Public comments?
Mayor, could the resolution be read? I don't know if Congress, unless it's too long, or summarize, please.
It's seven pages long. You want to read through it? Would you?
Read from 30 on would be enough.
Read from?
30 on might be enough.
30 on?
Yeah.
Okay. Item 30 will now read, whereas city council desires to end the University North Park Tax Increment Financing Project Cost Funding Mechanism in total, both sales tax increment and ad valorem increment immediately, without unduly damaging Norman Public Schools by ending the UNP TIF earlier than it would have if allowed to continue as it is presently... There's a word missing there.
Further discussed.
As further discussed in 33 herein, and whereas city council would like to receive a recommendation from the statutory TIF committee as soon as possible, but not later than 30 days after the passage of this resolution regarding how the UNP project plan can be restructured, ended, or otherwise modified, such as removing projects and, if necessary, refunding revenue accumulated in the UNP TIF to the taxing jurisdictions to accomplish the intent of city council as set out in number 30 above. Item 32 is that the city manager and the staff are hereby directed to forward to the Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee for consideration this resolution. And 33, this is the amendment, that the city manager and the staff are hereby directed to prepare proposals, a proposal or proposals using revenues that will be added to the city's general fund from sales tax that would have been in the UNP TIF increment to fund some or all of the Norman Public Schools' current expenditures on the PSSD II School Resource Officer Program, consistent with the ballot measure approved by the voters of the City of Norman and consistent with the city council's objectives as set out in item 30 above, and provide this proposal to city council and the Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee in furtherance of the city council's intent to end the UNP TIF now, and that the Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee is hereby requested to convene for the purpose of considering the council's objectives as set out in number 30 above, and that the mayor, as the chair of Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee, is hereby authorized to contact the ad valorem taxing jurisdictions to convene the committee as required by the Local Development Act. That the Norman University North Park Project Plan Statutory TIF Review Committee shall make a recommendation to the city council of the City of Norman as soon as possible, but no later than 30 days thereafter, unless otherwise requested by the committee for good cause in relation to the goals and objectives of the Norman University North Park Project Plan. Other, other questions? Is that, was that helpful? Okay. Well, I was going to make some comments at the end. I am concerned about what we're doing. I, I don't have any problem at all sending it to the statutory review committee. I think that they have an opportunity. We're making a huge decision here, a huge economic decision, and it's one that I'm not sure that is the right one for us to be making for the community. And I understand this is hard for me, because I have lots of friends sitting out there. I know that, think this is the right thing to do, and I've, I've heard that a lot. But the purpose of a TIF that's structured like this is as a long-term investment, and that's not what we're doing here. That's not what we're doing for us, and it's not what we're doing for the taxing jurisdictions. And I think that there may be some real legal entanglements. I think that the wiser thing to do would have been to do, and I guess we could still talk about it after the statutory review committee, but I think the wiser thing to do would be to do a reallocation of the TIF sales tax money, because it would put $300,000 more a month into the city coffers, and that would kind of bring us back to even, that kind of fills the hole that, right now, we're filling with our savings account, pretty much. This isn't giving us a lot of extra money to spend. So it takes away our opportunity to get the $8 million clawback. I think it makes it more difficult for us to get the developers to play the role that they should play in helping in terms of improving Tecumseh and, and Flood Street, and it allows the school system, if we just reallocate, to get their source of the money from, from ad, ad valorem. And there, there are other things as well. But this, this concerns me a lot. I think it has implications for our relationships with the other taxing jurisdictions and, and businesses. But I, I see where the council is. I feel a little like, was it Kevin Costner in Tin Cup? I feel like I've tried to hit the ball a lot of times, and it's not going anywhere. So I certainly am in favor of going ahead and sending it to the taxing jurisdictions for their consideration. So the motion on the floor is to adopt the resolution as amended. Councilmembers, you may cast your vote.
All votes have been cast, and the motion to adopt the resolution as amended passes
This brings us to miscellaneous discussion. This is an opportunity for citizens to address city council. Remarks should be directed to the council as a whole in five minutes or less. You want to direct, you want to come talk to us? All right. You raised your hand. You get to go first.
I'm Hickey, council and mayor. Thank you for your efforts this evening. Fested interest in the aquatic park, and it doesn't sound like OU's working out. And I had also heard, leading up to this process, that Ruby Grant Park was a possibility for the aquatic park, the only stipulation back in 2007. No big-lit parks, because it would affect the natural, the natural preserve of the area. But in fact, just a few minutes ago, I was looking at a scale that they were looking at at that time, and it actually included an aquatic park. I'm assuming OU sell, sold that property, I'm not assuming, it said in the article that OU had sold that property to the city. Why, why would we have to spend any money to acquire that land unless, I don't know of a process, that money would have to change hands? But they actually acquired that park, and it's basically undeveloped or very little development in that park, as it is right now, over on Franklin Road, which, you know, as long as we can get wet, we're going to be happy on the Sooner Swim Club, you know? And it would definitely help the city, I think, by creating another indoor year-round avenue to do a very healthy sport. But Ruby Grant Park looked like it is a great fit, as you said, if you know where we can get land and money. Not money, but I know where I think we can get land.
And, and that site has been discussed by the staff as a possibility, so.
Good. I hope we pursue that.
I, I know how important this is to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I love this. Now people are raising their hands. This is so good.
Out of school, I probably expected to.
Yeah. Student, yeah.
Yep. Okay, so my name is Keaton Anderson, and I'm here on behalf of Sooner Swim Club, talk about the indoor aquatic center. And I've been a swimmer for six years. It's one of my greatest, if not my greatest passions in life. And I think that this facility is going to be incredibly beneficial, because for a long time, we've been swimming at the OU pool, the Mary Kay Stiles Swim Complex, and they've done a great job with it, but it's been decades, and the pool, you know, gets old. And there's been some, what do I phrase, like stuff with in Oklahoma swimming to where a lot of people are switching clubs, and Center Swim Club is growing a lot, and running out of room to grow. There's over 100 people, and it's like, it's getting harder to expand with all the, the demand for the new pool space. And, you know, there's, it's also, you know, there's the high school teams, and in fact, the Norman North men's high school swim team has won today, I believe, four times in the past five years, or they've won it, they won it last year, and they won it a lot. So there's a very good group of swimmers right now. And it's not just about swimmers wanting a new pool. This is, this could be very beneficial to, like, I feel like the city as a whole, because there are several elite meets, and one of them is called Sectionals, where there's a lot of people that come from several states and, from different states. And there's, you know, there's been talk among the swimmers about, you know, that pool could potentially hold the meet, and it's very beneficial. There's, you know, I don't know the exact numbers, but I know that there's like, I'm guessing at least 2,000 people who go there. It's a very big meet, and there's a chance for a lot of benefits from that meet. And I just think that it's important, you know, for me, I like, obviously, I'm incredibly biased, because I have a really big passion for like, swimming, but I find it like, there's just, I don't really know how to phrase this, but there's, it's going, I think it's going to be really beneficial, and I'm all for it, and I think that, yeah, I just, I can't think what to say, my mind is blinking. But, you know, it's, there's an incredible group of swimmers. There's like a lot of elite swimmers in Center Swim Club, and we're expanding, I wouldn't say rapidly, but fairly quickly, and this new pool would be a great opportunity for us continuing to expand and to help the public in general, because swimming is popular activity for people to do. And as persons before me said, there's a lot of, you know, it's a very healthy activity. There's a lot of people doing it. As myself, as a swimmer, it's taught me so many skills that I will carry through the rest of my life, and having this new pool will help swimmers and people in general, just the public greatly, having more space and having the capacity to hold bigger competitions.
When they come. You can inspire us too, Roger.
Roger Gallagher, 25, 13 Woodsong. That was quite a speech. We were national referees and officials for 10 years in USA Swimming, and he has an excellent point. The, the facilities in Norman have been subpar for probably 40 years, and a new facility is very badly needed. The students that come out of there are generally exemplary kids. They work hard on it. Swimming is a private sport. You have yourself in a time that you're trying to beat. Same with track, tennis, golf is the same. The golf can drive you crazy. But swimming is a, is a critical sport for students, for, for you as an adult, later, the football players that you see can't walk 100 yards, and they try to water walk in the pools. When you reach 40 in a contact sport like that, you turn to swimming, one of the greatest sports of all. That wasn't my purpose in coming here. It was something else. In my neighborhood, they took down about a 100-foot-high tree about 10 days ago. We don't know yet. We're trying to find out. The person living in the house was renting. Now, did the renter do it, or did the homeowner consent to it? We don't know yet. The how, the tree was not diseased or anything like that. It was in between two fence rows. We think it might have been right-of-way land. We're not sure. So I was talking to Judd Foster about this, and he said that the Tree Board is considering some rules that the council might adopt regarding the destruction of trees, not in private property, because you can do anything with the tree you want in private property. You want to cut it down, you can cut it down. But if it's in the right-of-way, or it's subjected to control by the city, then the Tree Board is attempting to work up some rules where it may be saved, and if something happens, then one has to be replaced within the general regulations of the girth of that tree. So I just wanted to stress that when a 100-foot-high tree is cut down, it's incredible, and it's halfway down a slope where you could see it for a couple of blocks. And if the Tree Board can come up with something, I think it would benefit the city, and especially homeowners, and the neighborhoods. After all, we give away free trees in this, I think it's this spring with Arbor Day. So I did want to comment on that and hope that the Tree Board can come around to some rules that are, that are fair for everybody and that protects our trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Rogers, 633 Reed Avenue. I guess I'll add to the passion of swimming. I was a swimmer, actually, I was a springboard diver, so I'm going to put in my plug that we have a nice diving well, so we can have some masters-level diving competitions. And then I'll show you my stuff, if my knees still work. Okay? I can do one and a half in the pike position with pointed toes. How's that? I just wanted to thank you for the thoughtful discussion about being forward-looking concerning the University North Park TIF. I've been passionate about that since 2006, when I first showed up here and started to participate in city governance. And then I'd also like to say that as we go forward and other projects come along, maybe projects that ask for large amounts of taxpayers' dollars, that we think of it as a MAPS program or the Norman Forwards Program, and we allow citizens to vote on if they want to spend their money. I mean, is there money? It's not necessarily the business that pays the property taxes money, it's the community's money. So I encourage us all to think about more the MAPS and the Norman Forward sort of approach, where we vote on these big projects, so that we're sure that we have lots of community buy-in, and we have the discussions we need to have. And then if we approve it, like the SRO program, then we support it because we had the right process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hughes, 1521 Greenbrier Drive. I just wanted to thank you all for your consideration, this discussion this afternoon, this evening. It's been my personal opinion that the University of North Park has in fact been pretty devastating to retail throughout much of Norman. I'll confess a personal interest, we had a small interest in a business on the east side, and as the UNP went up, ours went down. The bottom line is that, as you mentioned, the UNP may be a very long-term situation. I think that also by helping to check some of that situation, you can get a long-term plan going to return retail throughout much of our city, such as Lindsey Street, the Ed Noble Parkway, Main Street, we've all known these things, and thank you for reconsidering where we're going with this University of North Park, which I think personally has been a terrible situation for Norman. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Travis Starling, 1848D, West Robinson Street, Ward Eight. Before I get to what I was going to say, I'll go ahead and add my support for the Sooner Swim Club and the, the proposed pool project. I hope that does go forward, and we get a nice new facility for our swimmers. So I am the Vice President of the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2875, City of Norman Employees Union, ASME for short, and we represent the 330 or so non-uniformed employees of the City of Norman. Every year, we do several charity events throughout the City of Norman, and this year is no different. For 2018, we are hosting a toy drive to benefit the Norman Christmas Day Community Dinner, and we'd like your help in making it successful. So ASME members will be collecting donations at three different locations in the municipal complex, here in City Hall, about 20 feet behind me, in the Utility Billing Division in Building C, and at Municipal Court in Building B. We're asking for new toys, still in the packaging, but not gift-wrapped. Your donations can be made now through December 14th, and again, all toys donated will be distributed to children at the Norman Christmas Day Community Dinner this December 25th. ASME is excited to be able to support our community through this project, and we hope the citizens of Norman will join us. Council members, you've received a press release in your emails, and I would hope you share that with your constituents. Thank you very much for all you do.
We can put it on the city Facebook and tell people when they come to City Hall to bring a gift.
Hello, Mac Burke, Ward Six. I really just had a question about this bit that you guys just sent to the Statutory Review Committee. Just a clarifying thing, I don't know if anyone can answer this, but if it goes there and they come up with something completely different, and it comes back to you guys, and you still wanted to end it, could you do so according to your own wildly divergent plan, as long as you had a supermajority? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It certainly appears to be that way. Thank you.
Bobby Stevens, Ward Five, 3801. This TIF, I've followed it since it started, and I've seen money start at this thing for years. The jewel of Norman is what it was called. I was under the understanding, I didn't even know what a TIF was when I first started this, but I thought it was for like, for a low-income place that wouldn't be built up, but, you know, I kind of, that's why I didn't really like this project from the get-go, because I felt, believed that I-35 frontage property wouldn't have been built right there in Norman on the mile of cars. But we got a TIF anyway. They talk about it taking away from funds of this and that in school. You know, we got, we got out Ward Five, we've got a bunch of schools out there, but a lot of the kids in Ward Five go to Noble, so it really don't, you know, really don't benefit from that. And I think that's sad, because we talk about these sidewalks and stuff, it's going out to Ward Five, out around our leg, all these high-dollar sidewalks. We got a school, well, I don't know, you know which school I'm talking about, right there on 108, that blocks the traffic every day. The road hazard. We can't even get no gravel on the side of it. It's been a problem since you were principal there. People fight on Facebook about it all the time, and I, I don't think that everybody's quite, quite aware of how much money is in this TIF. I'd like for maybe Parks, and I know he can't just probably pull it up right off the top of his head, Mr. Foster, but I'm wondering how much that park costs there, because a lot of people don't know about our, about our nice, big park there, about Sports Academy. I think we should have stuff like this come to Norman, but, you know, I don't think it should, should take the average businessman on East Side Norman that pays his way, and that be an insanity to let these people come here for, you know, build a store here. They're lucky to even get to come to our town, the way I look at it. But that's just my personal opinion. As a Ward Five member, you know, I, I see a lot of stuff that I just can't understand, you know, how it just keeps going on. Everybody, you got to cut this thing's head off, once and for all. It's going to suck the blood right out of Norman. It already has. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Campbell, 127 West Acres. It is dumbfounding that we have land on a transcontinental highway that was virgin pastureland that had to be pursued with tax increment financing at the expense of citizens in Norman. I want to share with you some thoughts that I had earlier today. People often mistake City Council for necromancers turning lead into gold, but alchemy is not your skill set. Speculation is an entirely different beast from representation. Ask yourself, do you trust City Council's judgment more than your own? Do you elect them to gamble with our resources? Or rather, do you elect them to be extensions of your will? The UNP TIF has become a den of iniquity with outlandish gambling schemes. We already have speculators in the Chamber of Commerce, NEDC, et cetera. Public servants must not continue to bow to private interests. There must be an end to the magic money show. There are too many citizens dealing with stark realities for our council to be binding properties with eternal spells, which don't even lead to a rabbit being pulled out of a hat. Being on council is not meant to be glamorous, and boy, have you attempted to cast glamors on the University North Park TIF. Norman should govern, OU should teach, neither should seek to cast spells on the public with smoke and mirrors, which have led us to reflect on your ineptitude and cough at your haughtiness.
Thank you.
Floyd Carroll at 607 East Main. And I've been around government most of my life, and I think you guys are doing a pretty good job compared to what you have to deal with. And I've also seen city councils get overwhelmed so bad that all of them walk out. So that's why I think you're doing a good job. And some of the people out here don't realize some of the problems that you have, and I appreciate your concern about the problems that some of the people that have. And because I'm under Bill's Ward over there, he's, he knows I'm pretty hard to deal with. So the problem that I got, I live at 607 East Main, and these homeless people walk up and down our streets over there in the daytime and look for stuff to steal at night. So my granddaughter's had her bike stolen so many times that she doesn't want one no more. And the second granddaughter, her bike was just stolen within the last week, and they're brand-new bicycles, so if you want to protect these children, somebody needs to get a handle on these dopeheads and thieves, because that's what it is. I'm not interested in feeding them, and I'm not really interested in taking care of them if they're going to steal. I don't mind taking care of the children, I'm just not taking care of that trash. So I came here to talk to Bill tonight about that, but I think you guys are doing a good job. Actually, I think the police department's doing a good job, too. Thank you, ma'am.
Bill Waterhouse, 428 and a half Buchanan. I was just wondering about Legacy Park. It's a beautiful park out there and everything like this, but I got a look, and there's no parking for this park. Are they going to use the property north of that for parking? Or is that just going to be another restaurant? There's absolutely no, no parking and zero handicaps.
We've been looking into that. If you want to, after this, talk with Mr. Foster, and, and the Oversight Committee's talking about it, and there is conversations about the park.
I'm ready. It's my turn to go first this time. Okay, first things first, we're gonna, I am going to host a ward meeting on December 2nd. I intend to host it at Fire Station 7 over by the YMCA, and it'll be a holiday party, potluck. It'll be fun. Ward Eight represented tonight. Thank you for coming out, by the way, those of you who are here. Some of you left, it's fine. Some other comments that I have are about the, the TIF and that we're making steps toward ending it, and so Norman is not as mature a city as some of the other cities that use TIFs as an economic development incentive. So I think that we need to consider that going forward. We have other options, and I don't think that just because, you know, other cities use them that are around us, we're not Oklahoma City. We aren't. We're not as mature, and we don't have to emulate them. I think we really need to look into some smart growth development or economic development incentives. This is well-known. There's a guy, his name is Chuck Maron, I can't spell his last name for you right now. You know him? Yeah. They, I mean, there's extensive research on this, and it's compact growth, it's high-density, it's environmentally friendly. We can do better, so that's kind of the comment that I have on that. I just think we need to make smarter decisions moving forward so that we're not wasting taxpayer dollars, and, or at least it doesn't feel like we're wasting taxpayer dollars, because that's, I think, how it feels, even if maybe that's not exactly the case, because we're dissatisfied. So I think there's a better way to go about making our city more attractive than using one, you know, strategy. That's all. Oh, and thank you, fellow council members, for being here tonight, and thank you all for coming out.
Councilmember Coleman.
I would also just thank everybody that, in attendance here at the meeting tonight, everybody watching at home. A lot of important issues that we deal with at City Hall, some of them are not very fun from some people's perspectives, but they are important, and having as many people in the community involved in these issues and letting us know what you think about them helps us make better decisions in the end. I haven't nailed down the exact date yet, but I am planning on having a Ward Seven meeting in December at our city-owned building at Reeves Park, which is also in Ward Seven. One of the things I would like to discuss at that meeting would be the potential for a senior center location to be at Reeves Park, mainly because we own the property already, there are no flood plan or FEMA issues with Reeves Park, and we wouldn't have to, again, would not have to purchase property, which could help us expedite such a project. It's one option that we, I think we need to consider. I agree that looking at other options for the Aquatic Center, like Ruby Grant Park, is something we need to consider as well. I think that one is a bit complicated because of the operational cost of that facility, and part of the idea was that the YMCA would help operate it. That's part of the reasoning why it was proposed to build that facility next to the YMCA. So that's something we'd have to consider if we're not going to put it there. But it is a facility that is greatly needed in this community. It's, it's strange to me that there are so many swim teams in this area between Norman and Moore Public High Schools, and, you know, Moore doesn't have a swim, swimming pool at their high school anymore, and OCCC closed theirs a few years ago, so I honestly don't even know where or how you guys are all able to practice, really, given how many different teams there are in the South Metro area. So I agree, this project cannot happen soon enough, and I'm looking forward to getting some progress made on that. And all the Norman Forward projects, we've, we've made a promise and a commitment to this community that we would fulfill what you all voted for three years ago. So we've made progress, we've got facilities that are open now and running, and people like them. We have a long way to go, and I think we have a good council, and I think we're going to be able to get there. So again, I appreciate all of you, and stay with us, and we'll keep working on all these issues. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark.
I want to thank all of my colleagues for your support or not contesting the Hamden Avenue project. My residents are very grateful for that and that unique situation. I also want to thank Parks and Recreation, the Veterans Committee, for the Veterans Ceremony. I apparently missed the mishap, because everything was fine when I came, but it was a lovely ceremony, and I really appreciated everybody's effort down from, you found like, the best little bugler around, and the cake was amazing, so the speakers were phenomenal, I really enjoyed it, and Councilman Hickman was right, it truly is a moving ceremony. Speaking of moving events in Norman, the second installment of the beloved community series is this Thursday from 6:30 to 8:00 at the East Library in Ward Six at 3051 Alameda. We will be discussing the topic of education and how it affects the four groups that we've highlighted for this speaker series. Also, Wednesday, we have the OU Loves Norman event, put on by Student Government Association, with the little bit of love we can get from OU. I plan to be there to enjoy it, so I would hope that all of you council members, if you're available to attend as well, it's from 11:00 to 2:00, and last year, it was in the Union Courtyard, and it might be a little chilly, but I plan to attend because I really appreciate the student efforts, and I hope that if you all are available, you'll stop by as well. A large part of it is supporting Small Business Saturday and encouraging the students to shop Norman and shop local, and I think that's pretty cool. Pickleball is also happening on Wednesday. Pretty jazzed about that. Apparently, it's a big deal. I've heard about it from several people, and after piano on Wednesday, me and the oldest are going to go check it out at the 12th Avenue Rec Center. Plan to wear my gym clothes, so maybe I'll try it out. I encourage you to try it out, too. That could be an opportunity for maybe redeveloping some of the tennis courts at the 12th Avenue Rec Center. I have dreams of Norman Forward, too, and as Councilmember Beerman's, disc golf is a big deal. I hear pickleball is, too, and I think both are friendly sports for people of all ages to enjoy, which is something we should be mindful of. I, too, am having a ward meeting in December, also on December 2nd. So mine is at 2:30. I don't know when yours is. Mine is on stormwater, sorry. No fun till we figure out stormwater. Hear that, Ward Six? So 12th Avenue Rec Center at 2:30 PM on Sunday, December 2nd. I will have representatives from the Citizen Committee, both from the Ward Six portion of it, but also Andy Shear and Amanda Naren will be joining us as well, so that'll be a really great opportunity for Ward Six residents to get some information on the proposals from that committee. And finally, the Norman Citizens Advisory Board for the Police Department is still accepting applications through December 1st. I know this is something our community has been very passionate about, so if you're interested in participating in that way, please consider applying. I believe on the Norman Police Department website, you can find those applications. And the chief is here, if you have any questions for him, for those that are in the audience tonight. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Wilson.
Thanks for coming, Bobby. I have a ward meeting every second Saturday, so just a reminder that we had ours, I believe it was last weekend, and then I will have one the second Saturday in December, and it will be at Franklin Baptist Church. I, too, was a swimmer in high school. I, too, was a swimmer in high school. And I actually went to US Grant High School in South Side, Oklahoma City. And we had to go to the basement of Capitol Hill High School, Capitol Hill Middle School, I even believe, to swim. And we were the, like, redheaded stepchildren of swimming across the city. We never did any, we were like the Bad News Bears of swimming. So we're terrible swimmers. And I think it was because we had a bad facility. So I'm hoping that we get this on board. And I think Perfect Swing, where that used to be, would be a great location. I know it's private property, but that's my thoughts on that. Thank you.
Councilmember Hickman.
Well, since we're talking about swimming so much, I really love the Pisces Project and the Swim Club. And a lot of great supporters are in my ward, and I speak to them as much as I can. But I'll be honest with you, I'm not a swimmer. I'm a sinker. When I was at the Air Force Academy, you have to take swimming your freshman year because, you know, if you fly, you might get shot down. You got, they got to make sure you know how to swim. I was in like the basic, like the, you know, starter, you know, learner. You know, I didn't have little things I had to wear, but almost. I mean, I had to have it not too deep, or I wouldn't drown, or I had to have somebody save me. So if we have a wonderful new indoor swim facility, maybe I can brush up on my swimming skills. Otherwise, like I said, I always tell people, I'm a sinker and not a swimmer. It's just, I don't know, just something about my body composition, I guess you could say. But I want to talk about something that's important, I think, to our community and to me. And tonight, we made some progress down that road. And it's about restoring public trust in your local government. We talked tonight about Norman Ford and how we have scheduling and budget challenges. And I think it's important that we have those conversations and share that with you because that's how we build public trust. We don't try to hide these things that are challenges and issues that we're having, but that we have those tough, open conversations with you and let you know about that we're working on them, but they are challenges and that we are, you know, dealing with them so that, you know, people don't think that we're trying to hide things from them. Because I've heard that from people that have reached out to me over the last months in particular, but even longer than that. And that's how, I think, we begin the process of reestablishing public trust that I think we have lost in this town. And we've got to reform our actions and our behaviors and how we communicate with the public. But also what that is, you know, also in addition to Norman Ford is the TIF. You know, there's still a lot of controversy about the TIF. You saw a vote on the resolutions night that after it was amended was unanimous, but before that was not unanimously supported. I hope that councilmembers will stick to their votes, regardless of what comes back from the Statutory Review Committee, and that we are, can be transparent and trusting to the public about where we stand on things and how we're going to handle your dollars in the future and what are the priorities of this community. And even, we talked about PSSD 2 tonight and how that was passed years ago. But we still haven't fully performed and delivered on the things that you voted on, that you are funding and that still have not been fully implemented on a bond project that you voted on, kind of like Norman Ford. And so I think it's important that we work on reestablishing that public trust. But part of that means that we, as a city government, have to deliver on the things that you've supported for us and that we reform our behavior and our actions and ensure that we're providing you with the transparency and accountability that you deserve to know how your city government's functioning. I also want to take a moment to tell everybody that this is a time of season to be thankful. I have a lot of things in my life that I'm thankful for and have very much a lot of gratitude in my life. And the only thing I'm disappointed about with the upcoming holidays is that my daughter, who's in New York City at Columbia, hey Abby, who might be watching on the internet right now, is not coming home. She's going to stay up in New York and be with some friends. But that's what she decided to do, and I'm really happy for her. And looking forward to seeing her for the longer holiday break. I did want to mention to Roger, who left, that the Community Planning and Transportation Committee, that I do chair, has been working on the tree ordinance with the Tree Board and that we have a good ordinance that, you know, draft that we're going to be sending on through the process. And I'm hopeful that we can get that voted on and approved by council at the beginning, early part of next year. And so that will hopefully help to provide some protection to our tree canopy in town and protect those trees, for example, that are in that right-of-way area that we've referred to as street trees. I also want to thank Roger and the committee for the Veterans Day ceremony. I've been going for many, many years, and people give me a hard time. I'm a crier. I'm sorry. I'm a, people that know me know that I'm an emotional guy. And sometimes I let that emotion come across in a way, being angry sometimes. I have that, I've done that here on council. But when I go to movies, you know, I'm a crier. I, you know, I cried at The Star is Born. And I always cry at Veterans Day on some part of it, whenever, whether it's, last year was the Korean veteran speaking because my father served in Korea, who's passed away now. And this time, this year was when they started TAPS and Amazing Grace, just because it brings back such memories for me, from my time in the service and with my father. And so I do hope that if you didn't make it out this year, that you do try to make it next year. It really is a very wonderful and emotional event. And then finally, I did want to say that, like a lot of other councilmembers, I'm working on scheduling a ward meeting. Councilmember Carter, Dr. Carter and I are likely planning to do a joint ward meeting to discuss transportation, stormwater, and senior citizen center, all initiatives that likely will be going to a public vote in April. And so that will be some really important information and a chance for you to provide us with feedback before we make final votes on those initiatives in January, before we put it on the ballot to be voted on in April. So please stay tuned. Councilmember Carter and I will figure out a date that works and get that scheduled and get the news out to you. And then finally, I guess I should mention that on Saturday, the 24th, is Small Business Saturday. I'm just going to tell you that there, for reasons to be undisclosed, you will not see me, hear from me, or know where I'm at on that day because I will be doing something else that happens once in your lifetime and has something to do with my day I was born. So those of you who are wondering about that, it's a milestone birthday for me. And so I will be underground. Thank you again for everybody for being here, and I really do appreciate it. Have a good night.
Councilmember.
How do you follow that? Four finales. I'm a crier and a sinker. I'm going underground, and I'm not telling you where I'm going. So I'm not feeling well, so I'm going to keep it brief. See, manager, I'd like to make a request that we change that clock to daylight savings time. I've been thinking it's 10:15, and I was like, my goodness. So if we, if you need somebody tall, I'd be happy to do it. If not, we can get the latter to that. Want to thank everybody. We recently had a War III award meeting last month. So I appreciate everybody that showed up for that. Talked about a lot of issues, stormwater and such. And so good feedback, appreciate that. We've given it back to staff that go through there. And I'll just finish up with, I made a note here, the mayor had said something about April Senior Center, that I said that was okay.
No, I said you said it.
Okay. I want to clarify the context of that because we were talking about having a stormwater and transportation bond issue in April. And I said that we should have, that we need to have a resolution to the senior center prior to April. Not, I want to wait till April before we do the senior center. Okay, I want to do the senior center tomorrow. Okay, so we were, I was, that was in the context of having a transportation and stormwater issue. So I just want to make sure I was clear that I'm not, I'm not waiting till April to do this. I think we should do it. The land issue is always, we have land. You know, it's a matter, do we want to use our city parks to do that? Ruby Grant was designed as a passive park. And that was what everybody kind of slided on. But that doesn't mean we can't, it's something on there. Andrews Park takes some land out there. So those are, we know, obviously, if we're any land that the city owns, it won't cost us anything. So that's always kind of our first choice, is to get the lowest land out there. I am optimistic about our negotiations with OU on the property. It's really, at this point in time, it's just a matter of writing a check. We could do this tomorrow if we all want to write a check and be serious about it. But I think there's some other options we can do with that, so we'll keep that going. So I'm going to leave it at that.
Councilmember Carter.
Bill's comments reminded me that the original, I'm honored to have the original Joe Carter, my father over here, my 86-year-old father, who is a Korean War veteran as well, is 86, and we're going to go drink beer after this meeting, aren't we? He's pretty game. Only have one thing. Mr. Foster, I would like, I'm asking a favor. I'm still getting a lot of comments about the ramps in the Legacy Park pond water area. And the 1x10 that's there now, I agree, probably meets the minimum of what might be required for, to rescue an animal. But if we could even expand that, get a couple of 2x10s, put some slats across it, stain it to where it looks halfway decent, maybe put one of the north in. I'm getting, I guess I'm the designated person, contact person for the animal community. And, yeah, I wonder why. But that would be very helpful. And thank you. I think, you know, anything we can do to make the public feel like it, we're, and I understand, maybe an update that, on a permanent-type solution, I'd love to get a, share that with people. So anytime you have a chance to do that, I appreciate it. That's all I got.
So I am extremely pleased that we're moving forward with ending the TIF. That was something, one of the first things I heard about when I started running for the Ward 1 seat. And it is something that my residents will not let me forget about, that it's something that they want to see happen. So I'm pleased that we're moving forward with that. So I had a ward meeting last week, and I appreciate everyone who attended. Sarah Kaplan, Carrie Evenson, Michelle Loudenback, and Amanda Naren came. We talked retail development, we talked stormwater, we talked transportation bond. I was given a pop quiz and asked to list all the Norman Forward projects off the top of my head. I was not prepared for that, but I passed. So I really appreciate that. I'm looking to possibly hold another one in early December. Looks like Sunday is going to be pretty busy for award meetings and such. But I'm going to look to hold another one and do it on a weekend because the one I held was on a weekday evening, which works for some people and not for others. I will have childcare available at that one as well. So I want to make sure that everyone knows about the Food and Shelter Community Thanksgiving on Thanksgiving, November 22nd. If you cannot donate your time, then donate items to make sure that they can feed everyone who shows up. They're also seeking volunteers. If you don't have much to do on Thanksgiving, you will always be welcome at the Food and Shelter Community Dinner. Another plug for Small Business Saturday. Please support your local businesses and try and conduct as much of your holiday shopping as possible at local businesses. Your dollar goes further there. On November 27th, at the council conference session, we will be continuing the discussion of diaper-changing stations and publicly available restrooms. Please come and share your thoughts. I'm hoping we can move something forward after that meeting. And surprisingly, that was actually one of the topics that I discussed with OK Adapt today. They wanted to make absolutely certain that we made sure that any changing table requirement we came up with ensured that anyone with a physical disability would be able to change their child in a safe manner. And I appreciate them meeting with me and talking to me about all of their concerns, particularly in the realm of transit. Some of you staffers will be hearing from me about some of the thoughts that they had or the things that I think we need to be working on. And lastly, I'd also like to wish my husband a happy 45th birthday today. He is at home with, hopefully, a sleeping child. And he is one of the main reasons why I'm here today. When I told him I was running for the Ward 1 seat, his eyes kind of got big, and he kind of sighed a little bit. And then he supported me 100% of the way. And a month after I won my council seat, I got pregnant and kind of freaked out a little bit at the commitments I had put myself in. And he told me everything was going to be fine and that, you know, he was more than, more than capable of taking on that responsibility on the nights that I'm here. So I would not be able to do the things that I do without him. And I hope that he is having a very happy 45th birthday. My daughter got her second flu shot booster today, so I'm hoping that she didn't give him too hard of a time. I don't blame her for it. She didn't know it was his birthday, and I kind of forgot when I made the, when I made the plans to get the booster shot. So happy birthday, James. I'll hopefully be home in a little while, and I hope you liked your gift.
Okay, final comments from the mayor. I'm going to do a thank you. This is the serious part. I'm going to do a thank you to the Stormwater Citizen Committee that met this afternoon at our request. Now that so many new things have happened with the discussion about possibly putting on the stormwater, or the stormwater bond with the transportation bond. Should we put on the utility with that? Should we put on the senior citizen center? And a lot of things have transpired, and a lot of data has been collected. And they had a fabulous meeting. Several city council members were there. And they are sending some things back for the council to make decisions on. And so I'm really glad everybody's having their ward meeting because we have a lot to talk about. This other item is on a lighter note. I want to recognize the Park Department. I had an opportunity to go and speak today to the Oklahoma Recreation and Parks, what's, Society. And they had their statewide meeting in Norman, and it was great. I heard the keynote speaker. And we won the Award of Excellence for our Westwood Park project. But this is really the fun part. They had an equipment operating contest that morning, this morning. And we won first place in the backpack blower contest. I love it. And we won third place in the zero-turn mower contest, second in backhoe, third in backhoe. And we came in third overall for the whole state, our equipment operators. I just think it's great. All right, Parks Department. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, I am so sorry.
That's okay. That's okay. I'll just send this out to the county.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine. That's fine.
I jumped in, you gotta, you've got to stop me because sometimes I just get.
Yes. I could have topped that.